I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for June 27, 2023. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Felk.
Here.
Bailey.
Here. Would everyone please join us for a moment of silence to reflect on our actions today? Thank you. Would everyone please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is the agenda received as proposed or amended.
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The agenda is received. Item two is public comments. Is there anyone in the audience today that would like to speak on something that is not on today's agenda? Is there anyone on Zoom today that would like to speak in public comments? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Whedon.
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payments today are $757,379.49. We did take delivery of two vehicles for the sheriff's office that are being paid for in there. And otherwise, we're paying for rock, the guardrail project, $135,000. Those are about the only large, significant items. We're also paying $1,993.16 from the sheriff's 60-40 fund. Everything appears to be in order.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. There's been a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Hall.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Felk.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes. Thank you. Receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. I'm the Nicholas County Engineer. Our secondary roads crews are hauling rock in the central portion of the county, placing mile rock. So that's keeping the truck drivers busy. Our contract paving work has finished on Beaver Valley Road as well as Washburn Road, and that turned out really nice. Got some smoothness, good smoothness on that road. I'll show you some photos of that. We'll probably be ready to final that out within four or five weeks, probably. So I'll show you some photos then, final photos. And then our bridge construction work on Pointer Road that I've been telling you about over the last two or three months, that's winding its way down. The contractor has finished the deck, placing the deck, and now they are working on the concrete barrier rail. And then they'll soon begin, if they haven't already started, to backfill the abutments and start on the grading portion of the work. We do have another paving project that will begin on right after the Fourth of July holiday on Ridgeway. So we are getting a message board out there. There's a lot of work in that portion of the county right now, not work by us, but we just want to get the public notified. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for an update? Anyone on Zoom?
I thought I would throw one out.
Okay.
Sorry, I was a little slow. I didn't see if anybody else was going to get up. Just wanted to update all of you. We did have our ratings call with Moody's yesterday. I think that went well. Hopefully, we'll have the rating by the end of this week or next week, and we'll see how that goes. That's always, we hadn't done that here for about seven years, so that took a little bit of work to show them all the trends and things, but I think it went well. We also, I've been working with Nate Neff at the jail and also a couple of the board members on the jail medical RFP. So Nate and I are just doing some little cleanup things, and hopefully, we'll be presenting that to you possibly at the next meeting. We wanted to get it out to you ahead of the meeting, but I know Nate's out of town now, so we'll have to see if we can make that schedule work.
That July 5th, he mentioned July 5th.
I think we're gonna, yeah, I just need to touch base with him first.
Okay.
But, yeah, that was our plan originally, and then I, yeah, I've probably been the one that's been slow at getting some things reviewed with that. We're also still in the process of hiring a replacement for Debbie, but that process is going along, and now we have year end to get through and new year to start, but, yeah, plenty busy in our area.
Yeah, that's great. I was gonna say, I sat in on the Moody's call and truly just sat in and there wasn't any part for me to play other than that, but I, and John was on as well for that. But I said, Michelle did about an hour presentation about the county and the overall evaluation and the view of the county and what's going on with the county itself and also with county government and art finances and that type of thing, and then how it relates to the project. So I know you worked hard on over the weekend on it, but thank you for all of that. It was very good. And that information probably be available for later to share with the board, the presentation itself.
If anybody's interested.
It was a lot of good information. And then get back to us.
Michelle.
Yes.
Yeah, I got a question for Michelle. Michelle, we used to alternate every other year. We used to send representatives from Blackhawk County to Moody's, and then the following year, they would come here and we would take them on a tour of the county, the various things that we've done. Do you think there's, we should be back into that mode of doing that?
It's interesting. All that travel came to a stop for Moody's, of course, with the pandemic, and I don't know if they're starting yet. We actually talked with them about coming here. I told them we need to get them here because there really is so much to show them. I think that has changed. And they, he did sound interested, so I don't know if it would be next year, but hopefully, we'll get them to come. And there's other entities that they rate to that we could maybe get together and have a good tour with Hawkeye and the cities. And I just think our county has a lot of good things to show them, so hopefully, we can get them here next time.
Well, the gentleman on the call had been here before, so he indicated an interest in coming back and seeing how things have changed and what's going on in the community. So I thought that sounded positive.
It did. It really did sound.
Did he try to do that?
Yep.
So a good idea, Tom, although the Zoom worked really well from saving us travel to go there and do that type of presentation. I thought, I liked that mode I'm used, kind of, that mode for now, but great to have them here.
It did work well for the small group like that. The only thing you miss is that you can't show them, can't reach out and see new businesses, the river lighting, those kind of things, but, yeah.
Yeah, we actually drove from one end of the county to the other end, Cedar Falls, our small towns that were doing something, the Waterloo's and so forth. And it was, it was really beneficial. I think there was two representatives that come down. It was myself and the finance director, and we drove them all over Blackhawk County. So again, I think it's something that we should probably do in the future.
Yep. I think that's a great idea. Agree.
It's always good to showcase, I think. It's, even for our, I think for us, it's good. Like when we've done the bus tours and gone around, whether it's roads and bridges with Kathy and stuff, it's always been beneficial. So, yeah. Thanks, Tom. Are there any other department heads or elected officials that would like to give an update? Anybody? All right. Moving on to item five, minutes approved for June 20, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Later today, we have the hearing and bid opening for the purchase of network switches. Item seven, consent agenda. Following items are acted upon by a single resolution unless there's something that supervisor would like removed for discussion.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. If there's no discussion, please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Felk.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes. Contracts and agreements. Resolution that the Iowa DNR Intergovernmental 28E Agreement between Blackhawk County and the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, establishing terms and conditions for the delegation of private water well permitting to Blackhawk County Board of Health, the county authorized permitting agency, be approved and direct the chair to sign for the same as recommended by the Blackhawk County Board of Health.
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded. Were you going to speak to that? Okay, that'd be great. No, go ahead, please.
Good morning to the board. Jared Parmdrom, the Environmental Health Program Manager. This really represents an ongoing effort that we have with the DNR to provide permitting to the 24 wells and septics, or wells in particular. So this actually is kind of the end, end state of about a year and a half of work. As you all know, we've just, we've just completed a complete review and rewrite of an ordinance to support this, and now we're looking to have this signed off, return it to the DNR so that we can continue the good work we're doing with permitting for our wells.
Very important. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. If there are no further questions, then please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Schwartz.
Yes. Felk.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes. Item B, resolution that the agreement between Blackhawk County and Spyglass Group LLC to complete an audit of telecommunications invoicing and services be approved and direct the board to sign for same as recommended by Michelle Whedon, Finance Director, and Rory Giving, Maintenance Superintendent.
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded. Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Rory Giving, Maintenance Superintendent. You may recall, this has been in front of you a few weeks back, and it was recommended that we look for some references. Michelle did reach out to Hawkeye Community College, and Michelle, I'll let you talk to that because I didn't bring a copy of that response, but...
I did speak with Dan Gillan. He's the Vice President of Finance or something there. I can't remember the exact title now. But they have hired Spyglass. In fact, they've hired them two times. The first time, they had significant savings that were identified. So about three years later, they asked them to come back. There were some savings the second time, but much lower. So he said they, it was a smooth process, and obviously, they felt comfortable with them because they've used them multiple times.
And just to recap also, Spyglass, the services that they offer, they look at our phone bills. What they're trying to look for is whether or not we're being charged the appropriate fees, looking for any taxes that might be on the phone bill that is not supposed to be. And so basically, that's what it is. They're doing an audit of our billing and just looking for any kind of discrepancy. And then how it works is if they, if we decide to pursue that discrepancy, and then if there's a refund or cost savings as a result of that, their fee would be 50% of that, that savings that we would result in.
So actually, just the first, just one year savings, future savings, all go in our pocket, 100%.
Yeah.
So I was gonna say, how does that work then? You mentioned, like, if we decided to pursue it. So they go ahead and do the work and then get back to us on what they found before?
Right. And say for an example, if they found some extensions or lines that, you know, they say, gosh, these haven't been used, but we have a reason that they're there. We do have that opportunity to essentially say, no, we're not going after that piece, but we may want to go after this piece because this might be a hidden fee or something. So it does give us the opportunity, from my understanding, that we can review any, any potential discrepancies that they do find before we move forward. And that's a good thing because we don't want to eliminate something that could potentially impact our, our system.
Timeline? I think we've, you've talked on that before, and I've just forgotten it probably. How long it takes them to do it, or what happens?
The last time I, that we talked to them, I think they thought about four weeks, so...
Relatively short.
Yeah, I haven't, I didn't set up a follow-up meeting with them this time until the board directs us, but kind of expecting them to call this afternoon, so they've been very diligent at reaching out to us and trying to get this done, so.
And they do this, like you say, to other, like, city governments and county governments, as well as the, I guess, educational institutions, I'm sure, anybody that has these large bills be kind of audited.
Right. I don't know if it's primarily governments, but obviously, that was the book of business we were interested in, so.
Okay. Are there any questions or further discussion? Or, Tom, did you have a question? It seemed like it.
No, that's fine.
Got it answered. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, this is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Felk.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes. Thank you. Item C, resolution that the statement of completion and final acceptance of work for Project LFM-6001-7X-07 for fiscal year 2023, guardrail replacements approved and direct the chair to sign for same and authorize and direct the auditor to make final payment in the amount of $4,181.64 with a total project cost of $139,387.95 as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer. Project contracted at $139,825 with a contract completion date of June 30. Liquidated damages assessed zero to the contractor David Grip, Construction Williamsburg, Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
Good morning, Again Board. I've told you in the past about our need to replace damaged guardrail as well as replacing guardrail that is out of compliance due to its age primarily. I've told you how today's taller, larger vehicles are resulting in, you know, new standards over time. So we had two culverts that we needed to upgrade the guardrail on as well as one bridge. The bridge is on Elk Run Road just north of Dubuque Road. We share that structure 50/50 with the city of Elk Run Heights. So for that one portion of the project, they are paying half of the cost, which is about $33,000. Dave Grip did the, the work in a timely fashion, and there were no liquidated damages, and they did a satisfactory, met all of these specifications. So I would recommend that you approve this and we be allowed to make the final payment to them.
Thank you. No further questions. Please answer as your name is called.
Hall.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Felk.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes. Item D, resolution that the contract between Blackhawk County and Blackhawk County Emergency Management Agency for Blackhawk County to provide IT services to EMA be approved and the chair be directed to sign for same.
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded. Mr. You.
Morning, Board. Al, you IT Director. Last week, we kind of briefly went over some of the highlights of the MOU. Was there, did you guys have any questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Ready for vote, but thanks for, all right. It's the resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Felk.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes. Item E, resolution that the contract for library services between Blackhawk County and the Board of Trustees of the public libraries in the cities of Cedar Falls, Dunkerton, Evansdale, Hudson, Janesville, La Porte City, and Waterloo at a total amount of $180,200 for fiscal year '24 be approved and direct the chair to sign.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Michelle, did you want to comment about this at all or just that it was a contract that we needed to?
This is just the contract formalizing what we approved during the budget process to allocate to each of the libraries within the county.
Thank you. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Felk.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes. Item nine, other business. Resolution that the policy revision to the non-bargaining personal days policy be approved effective July 1, 2023 as recommended by the Policy Review Committee.
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded. Amanda.
Good morning, Board. Amanda Fessmer, HR Director. So, sorry, I've been out since, like, last Wednesday, so trying to get back in the swing of things. But, so I sent an email and kind of provided an overview of what we discussed during policy review with regards to this policy and the next policy. And ultimately, we're just trying to make this more equitable across the different roles here, and especially for this very small group of our workforce. It's about 44 people that are in management, supervisory, and professional or confidential roles that were excluded from benefits beginning July 1, 2006, and excluded in a way that it was a much less desirable benefit package. That was an attempt to get everybody on that unilaterally, and it really flopped with the unions. And so we're now about, you know, 20 years post that decision, and I don't think, I think it's just created this issue. And at the time in 2006, it probably didn't affect many people because it was those that would be hired into these non-bargaining roles after that July 1 date. And since we've had people remote from the union or come in externally or move around, have that kind of internal changes, we're seeing that it's pretty significant in time off for what this group gets versus almost everyone else here of our 400 employees. So the personal days, these are not paid out. These are casual days. It's a use-it-or-lose-it benefit. I'm just recommending that we don't make any, we don't base it based on when you're hired. So really, it's just eliminating that, saying that if you're hired prior to July 1 and just open it to all non-bargaining. One question that did come up, I did exclude except for department heads. That term department head's a little tricky here still because we refer to them kind of informally. We have three people that are department heads that don't have any benefits. So with this, and I'm sorry, not, they don't have any accruals, like, they don't have specific accruals where they're paid out or they get to use. They're truly salaried. They kind of, you know, just get paid that same rate no matter what. They don't have to actually submit time off requests. So that would be the only thing, that'd probably be the next step of this, is exploring, you know, should we give Yolando, Kathy, and Mike Hendrickson the time off benefits similar to myself, Rory, Michelle, Al, and the other kind of department head, non-bargaining officials? So, but we are recommending this to just, you know, be more equitable across our time off plans, whether it's union, non-union, management, or professional, so.
There any questions or comments?
I just appreciate the work going into this. I think this will help a lot of this group of employees out a lot.
Great. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Felk.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes. Item B, resolution that the policy revision to the non-bargaining paid time off benefit policy be approved effective July 1, 2023 as recommended by the Policy Review Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so the purpose of these changes is, again, as we were looking at the different benefit areas and accrual times off, the PTO plan was very restrictive in how you could use that medical bank for your own illness, for a family member illness, medical appointments, things like that. What we were seeing is that most people were being, in this group of 44 employees, were having to use their short-term PTO, which is more kind of, as we position it as vacation, having to use that time for their medical needs to be off of work. And a lot of the feedback that I had been receiving since I became Director is that, you know, when does this policy get looked at for possible revisions? And so that was really kind of what prompted this, just having a number of individuals kind of ask, is there any opportunity for us, the board, to reconsider this, for you to reconsider this as the HR Director? And, and again, it's just, especially after COVID as well, we've seen a lot of, I guess it just was an opportunity to kind of look at it and make sure that it's just more fair, it's more accessible, since we are providing it as a benefit. So. There was a few other things in here with regards to an incentive. We do provide incentives for not using sick time for almost all of our employees, except for this group, where that if you don't use sick time, if you get to a certain max or amount, then you are rewarded by you could convert some of that sick time. So we did introduce that into this policy as what's been done in the past. And I also want to note, this is, again, of the people that this represents, it's not our law enforcement division, as they have a separate policy that allows them to use the same benefits of, as the union. So I'm just trying to do the same thing for our non-law enforcement, supervisory, managerial staff as well, for those that they oversee, you know, the unions and the non-bargaining employees hired before, '07, '08, and '06, that get to use the benefits more easily, so.
Nice to see. Comments or questions? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Hall.
Yes.
Little.
Yep.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Felk.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes. Item C, resolution that the 2023-24 property casualty liability and risk management renewal from PDCM or coverage through the Iowa Communities Assurance Pool in the amount of $776,700, which is an 11% increase, plus the renewal of a three-year policy for pollution liability coverage of $44,598 be approved and direct the chair to sign as recommended by the Insurance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Michelle, I know it was last minute notice, but as chair, I thought if you would update...
I forgot to mention that department had update, too.
You'd update.
We have been, and thank you to Debbie in the board office, because she's spent a lot of time putting together the renewal information. That process starts in April, actually, and we are just getting the quotes now. So we did have an insurance committee meeting last week, and we're presented with our renewal, which is an 11.2% premium increase excluding that pollution policy. We didn't quite budget that much, so we are about $114,000 short in the budget for 2024, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later. The pollution policy is a, you pay for three years at a time. So that's why I listed that out separately. That premium is the $44,598, and that is about an annual 3% increase from the last time we renewed it. So 9% cumulative, since it's for three years.
I was gonna, no, is there, are there any questions or comments? Otherwise, I was gonna say, I did have a question, and I'd ask Michelle about it. And, and Tom, I think I'd made a comment to you as well on the insurance committee as far as the pollution liability coverage. And I appreciate the fact that you separated it out, but after that meeting, I just had questions on what it was, what pollution coverage was, what it covers, and what we're doing as a county, and if that's needed or whatever. And I would like to follow up, have us follow up with Chris Faraday, just more information about that before we went ahead and approved that, if it's all right with the board. So wanted to make sure, though, we had insurance coverage effective July 1, so that being separated wouldn't pertain to anything in the pollution coverage, I'm assuming, right? Want to be sure on that.
If you...
If we support the, the recommendation of the $776,700, gives us the coverage for July 1.
Yes.
And the other, we could do in the next week or two, I'm assuming, if the holiday is not an issue.
So the $776 includes that 44?
Oh, it does.
Yes.
So we could...
If we, if you want to hold off on that, I would need to speak to the agent. Obviously, if we don't approve it for a couple weeks, you might not have coverage for that couple weeks, but they might be able to work with us on that. They will often issue a binder, too, so I would need to reach out to them.
Oh.
If, if you don't want to...
I'd still like to cover, I guess, just for our information, because I said, it just kind of was, he mentioned we have pollution, and it was kind of like, okay, we didn't even think about it or consider it or talk about it. So if we can do that, yeah, if you'd reach out to them, I'm sure they'll give us coverage for the other, but, yeah, make sure.
Yes, I'm sure we can get the rest of it.
If that's all right with the board, I guess, just to clarify for all of us.
So we're gonna...
Yeah, I was, does someone have a sense in the room of what this kind of stuff covers? Or Rory have a sense? Or, yes?
Well, I believe back in, in 2008, we did get some water over at the jail. There was some community disaster funds received by the county to make some improvements over there, which included adding some redundancies with regards to the groundwater pumps that we have. And then we also did the same thing here at the courthouse. So I'm assuming that it would be situations like that, potentially, that this, this coverage would, would be looking at. If we had any kind of major, you know, catastrophic situation come up, that's where I think this would come into play. But, like I said, since then, you know, we have made several improvements to our sites downtown here. But with regards to conservation secondary roads, you know, I think, I think there would be some benefit to get together, absolutely, on the 5th, just to kind of walk through some of those potential scenarios.
Thank you. I, I said, I think we said it was in 2008 when there was, the flood occurred is when we started or initiated that. And maybe things have changed, maybe we've made the corrections, maybe we still need it. But I had asked and was hoping the insurance committee or members of us with some of the staff, like conservation, maintenance, and roads and bridges. And then Tom and I are on the insurance committee, so if the two of us could meet with that group and get some information on, from them, and then also meet with Chris one more time, I guess, to see if we need that coverage. Or, I happened to be in an inter cog meeting, probably the day of this meeting or the day after, and ask other counties if they had pollution liability, and none of them did. after, and ask other counties if they had pollution liability, and none of them did. Of the four or five, I think, that were there, they said they didn't. So it just prompted the question to maybe double check that it is coverage we need and see.
Yeah, Linda, after that was brought up, and we talked about that, I also checked with some counties, and they really had no idea what it was for insurance. So they currently don't carry it either.
Okay. So like I said, I'm sure Chris will tell us if it's important for us or not. Oh, was John?
One more to add, is your biggest risk is going to be your fuel tanks that you have, any kind of diesel spills?
Yeah.
Gas spills, that's what that insurance company covers mainly.
Sure.
Or your own res, and any other kind of chemical storage that you may have. It's nice if you have brownfield sites, but mainly it's for those future things that you're going to have if you have a spill for your diesel stuff.
Yeah, no, I knew that was covered too. But yeah, I don't think that's why we got it in 2008, but I think it sure covers that type of thing too, so that's great.
It was something similar to that that came up in the flood, that probably has been remediated, but I would like the, I would like our agent to clarify for us what exactly would be covered.
Yeah, and if you recall, I believe it was right around 2009 or so, we did remove a fuel tank over at the Country View site as well. So I do remember back at that time, there being some discussion about this particular add-on to the policies, so.
I was thinking about things like all the asbestos that we had removed from the jail parking lot and.
Yeah.
Surprises, those kinds of things, yeah. That's why I said it's, could very well be needed, but it was just kind of to be fresher, I guess, because we didn't talk about it or hadn't been addressed, so. And Tom, I was going to ask you as well, I think I'd ask the staff if like, maybe after our next, our July 5th board meeting, we just stay on Zoom and have that conversation maybe with where we want to go with that, or talk about some of those things, if that works for you.
Sure. I was under the impression, I thought the question was asked. I didn't think it covered act of God situations like floods and stuff. So I'm not so sure that pollution was intended for the floods. I think it was more for the diesel tank stuff like he was talking about, and maybe some asbestos when we tore up the parking lot over in the sheriff's area.
Yeah. Just making certain, I guess, that we clarify and make sure we have the coverage we need and.
Yeah.
Something we don't, so yeah, thank you. So would we?
So are we looking?
Checking, yeah, I was gonna say, what were you thinking we'd do for this insurance coverage to make sure we are covered?
I think that depends on whether you think you might want to carry the pollution coverage or not. If you.
Well, you want us to approve all of it and then exclude that at a later date?
Cancel it, but maybe that's the appropriate thing to do.
Do it that way.
So the total would be, what, $732,102?
No, oh, no.
I think, I think what Linda's suggesting is go ahead and approve the $776.
Cancel later, if that's our desire.
Okay.
So I, and then, well, if we choose not to have it again, I think we can cancel it. I think that way you're covered, in case it is something we find is critical to us.
Turn your ear on the side of coverage and then cancel later.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, super.
Fill some fuel oil.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? All right, this is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwart?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item D, resolution that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Katherine Nicholas, county engineer, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same, to purchase one 60-inch skid steer drum mulcher in the amount of $31,403 from Diamond Mowers Sioux Falls, South Dakota.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Kathy?
Yes, this was in our FY '24 budget, capital budget. We budgeted $34,000 for this type of mower. We did, roadside biologist did solicit three vendors. Only two of them responded to you. We sent you a list of those bids, and Diamond Mowers, which we've used, we've had several diamond mowers in the past. They're a good product, good long-lasting quality. We would like to, they were the less expensive of the two bids we received with the $30,978. We would like to be able to purchase that mower for $31,403. So I would ask that we be allowed to purchase that using our FY '24 funds.
Can I ask a question? Are you not taking delivery of that till July then? If we're buying it with 25, I kind of wish we'd wait until the next meeting. I didn't realize that.
Yes, we, we will be receiving it in the next several weeks. It won't be today or correct.
Great, thank you. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwart?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item E, that the county auditor be authorized and directed to transfer $0 from the general fund to the self-insurance property liability fund for fiscal year '23. Period. No recommendation.
So moved.
Thank you.
Actually, I, I'd like to discuss this one with you. So I was surprised when the insurance quotes were delivered to us in the insurance committee meeting at the increase, so I did suggest maybe we choose not to make this transfer. But after reviewing it further after the meeting, I think it would make more sense to go ahead and do the transfer for fiscal '23 in this year, and it would make more sense potentially not to do it for the '24 year, since that's the year we'll be paying the increased premiums. So we would discuss that a year from now, but I would ask that we go ahead and amend this motion if, if you agree to transfer $125,000, because we do have the funds available in this budget year to do that.
I'll amend my motion to be for the transfer of $125,000.
I amend my second.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, discussion? All right, this is a motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item F, motion to approve the personnel requisition submitted for a property maintenance assistant effective June 27, 2023, as recommended by Rory giving maintenance superintendent.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. I'm sure there's no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item G, resolution directing the advertisement for the sale of $4,600,000 general obligation funds, Series 2023, and approve electronic bidding procedures in the official statement as recommended by the finance director.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No discussion. Please answer as your name is called.
Chelka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Abstain.
Schwart?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item H, motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing for facility security services to be held at 9:07 on Tuesday, July 18, in the boardroom of Blackhawk County Courthouse on 5th Street, Waterloo, Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. The time is 9:27, and this is a hearing bid opening on the proposed purchase of network switches. Motion to receive and place on file, proof of publication.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to close the hearing after oral and written comments are received.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any written comments, Mr. Reader?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. No, none at all, I guess we. I don't know what we do.
Are we ready?
Yep, you're ready.
We have received six bids from different vendors, and please note that there may be multiple bids inside each envelope, so we'll go ahead and start with the first.
And they were all received by 5 o'clock Monday?
Correct, yep. They were received over the deadline, yep.
Thank you. Okay. Open away, it's the biggest box I've seen in a while for bids.
I know.
Wow.
All right, the first bid is from a company called ByteSpeed, B-Y-T-E Speed, all in word. So in RRP, we allowed all these vendors to bid any manufacturer from, for network switches. So the, the manufacturer they bid was Ruckus, that's spelled R-U-C-K-U-S. And then let me find the bid amount.
The engineer's estimate was $240,000.
Yeah, I forgot to fix that. So their bid amount for Ruckus switches is $195,396, 1-9-5-3-9-6. And that's for ByteSpeed. Oh. They sealed it. This bid is from a company called Dreadnought Endeavors, and they are based out of California, Calabasas. I can provide all this information later. They have provided a bid for the manufacturer of. One second, I apologize. So they have bid for Juniper switches, that's J-U-N-I-P-E-R, and their bid amount is $265,336.14. So that's 2-6-5-3-3-6-point-1-4. Okay, and that was Dreadnought Endeavors for that bid.
Hi. Oh, you know that there's. Oh, you remember this basis? Oh my God, I'm terrified, you're right, I'll wait.
Okay, the next bid is from a company called VP, I'm sorry, V Prime Tech. So the letter V and then prime tech. They are based out of Houston, Texas. They have bid for the manufacturer of, called Aruba, A-R-U-B-A, Aruba.
We're going down.
And their bid amount is $556,182.06. That's 5-5-6-1-8-2-point-0-6. Once again, that was V Prime Tech for that bid.
Yeah.
Okay, the next bid is from Sterling, and they are out of North Sioux City, South Dakota. Okay, Sterling has bid for the manufacturer Fortinet, that's F-O-R-T-I-N-E-T, Fortinet. Their bid amount is $177,168.16. So that's 1-7-7-1-6-8-point-16. And that's Sterling. The next vendor is CDWG. Okay, and they have bid Juniper switches, and their bid amount is $206,872. Finders. Okay. The next company is Converge One, I believe they are out of Des Moines. That's Converge One, all one word. For one manufacturer, they have bid is Extreme. And let me see what the bid amount is. So Converge One has bid Extreme, and their bid is $267,183.32. Then Converge also bid another manufacturer. Converge bid Meraki, that's M-E-R-A-K-I, M-E-R-A-K-I. Hmm? Okay. So Converge One bid Meraki for, and their bid amount is $187,772.82. That's 1-8-7-7-7-2-point-82. Okay, and that.
Concludes.
Completes, concludes all the bids. It was fun.
Got some homework.
Yes, we do, so. All right.
That's great, well, thank you. I was gonna say, and I believe there's a motion and a second, I don't believe I took a vote on it, right, Grant? On the, here after oral comments and written? Just to make sure.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. We had the bids received, now move on to motion that the board of supervisors review and place on file the bids to allow time to review and bid, set bids recommended by L-U IT Director.
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 10, work session, is there anyone that wants to discuss any county projects, ARPA projects, or?
I just wanted to bring up the public health, where we're at with that, maybe request an update from the committee at the next meeting. I know that in the discussions that I've heard from amongst the board, it seems like elections and public health has been sort of our, the two elephants, and we've got some movement on, on elections, and would just like an update, I think, from the, from that committee on, on the public health side. Personally, I'm really open and excited about the idea of a separate location, another building, but I'm also open to renovation. I don't know where, if there's some input and maybe direction from the board of supervisors as to where they're feeling, what they're open to, it might also be helpful for the, for the group, but.
Yeah. To address that, I think that's what we were planning to do, is just getting the information now put together, I think, as a small group that's been collecting it around the building and the tenants in the building. I think that was our goal, whether or not we'll have it for the 5th. I know we were talking about trying to meet this week, and may still be able to do that, but there were three days of training sessions, or, so I'm not sure, before the holiday, we get that done, but we will certainly be doing that in treasurer's office as well as elections. Rory had an update, I think, yesterday to say that, about the bid, the meeting with bidders and where that, those two are, so that was progress. Do you want to share that?
Yeah, yeah, with regards to the elections, the auditors, and the treasurers, the bids are due on the 30th. So then our group, our committee that met with the, during the pre-bid portion of that will be the same group that will then score those proposals. So we did have two companies attend the pre-bid, so we're looking forward to hopefully receiving two proposals. And then, I guess, with regards to the rescue act, there had been a application. two proposals. And then, I guess, with regards to the Rescue Act, there had been a application submitted to the committee, the ARPA committee, for the AV equipment for this room here. So that has been submitted. I don't know exactly where that's at, if that's been submitted to Baker Tilly yet or not, but, so that's kind of been the movement here for the last week with regards to ARPA.
I, I do want to make sure as we're considering the, the public health clinic, that we, as we're coming up with all the, all the different alternatives, that we're giving a full and thorough consideration to the possibility of a, of a, of a new location as well, because I've heard, I've heard that kind of support voiced. So I just want to make sure that that's getting as, as full of consideration as, as the alternatives of renovation are as well, so that we can really compare both of them and make the best choice.
I think that's why it needs to come back to the board, definitely. But I said, in the meantime, we were kind of going around to the different tenants, seeing what, what they do have, what space we've got, if it could work or not work out in the current facility and what that would require. So that was just one of the options, but yeah. Putting together the information was a little more difficult, collecting it was, I should say. But it was, it was good information. I think we all enjoyed the meetings with the groups and the, kind of the tours of what they had for space and what they were doing in their different, whether it was DHS or county social services, or I think all of us appreciated even the time Caitlin did to show theirs, their space as well. So yeah, great. We know that's one that's very important and sizable project, so I'm gonna get that one kind of going soon. Just a reminder, and hoping that at least three of us can attend the oversight meeting tomorrow.
Yep.
I'll zoom in.
Okay, yeah, and I think probably most of the mayors, I wouldn't be surprised it won't zoom in as well, just because we expect it to be a short meeting, but if not, I know, Tavis, you mentioned you have a meeting at 2, but if we're still on at 2, as long as we have 3, thank you. Okay, thank you. Super. Any reports or information from the board?
Just something real quick, just to, to bring up and maybe put on the radar. I know that we budgeted for this upcoming year. We, we had it as a board with that community services pool from last year. From my calculation, there's, I talked to Michelle early, just before the meeting, so I don't expect a number from her yet, but perhaps $20,000 that wasn't spent from this, from this current year. But I think it would be good for us to, as we move into the, into the new fiscal year, makes sense for us to have that conversation of what that, that application period is going to look like. And so my intent is to bring it up at the July 5th meeting.
Bring up the, the discussion?
Just to, yep, just to bring the discussion, and, and hopefully, I think, possible board action just to set that application. I think there was a portal on, on our website last time that was used to, to gather those, those applications, and so I would suspect that would make the most sense, but.
Yeah, I think it'd be good for us to open that up, still, like, this summertime, I think, you know, whether it's, you know, sometime during the month of August would give us plenty of time to get the leg workout, and that's kind of a, I don't want to say a, a less busy time for anybody, but it's not as intensive a time of other stuff.
Well, and I know we talked about strategic planning a little bit too, when we talk about dollars that we will have available or want to consider on projects or community things or whatever too. So it might be, it kind of includes some of that in it too, if it was centered just that. Just a thought, but certainly we can address one at a time too, I just thought, yeah, as it becomes rather large. So, all right, thank you. Was there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, meetings.